Well, we just, it was nothing. Today, you can't disagree with somebody on a, on a, on a parking violation and they-
The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the Thinking Impair.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
I'd give real money to hit Marc DeSalvo to the Papa Paws. He has hidden talents, I understand. See if we can get this on some of the North Andover forum pages, too. Share to a group. Why wouldn't let me do that? Let's try this. Melvin Taylor seems to be doing better, by the way, Chrissy, so I think he's gonna be doing another live show soon.
Oh, that's awesome. We definitely need to go see him.
Absolutely.
Support.
Why can't I share to a group or something?
I don't know. Facebook, man.
They changed it again. It's just so mad.
Uh huh.
It's like once a week.
Pretty much.
You're paying rights for this music, of course, right, Tom?
Um, we actually have the rights to this song.
Oh, good.
Because he wrote it for the show.
No kidding?
Yeah, he wrote it for the show, then he put it on an album, and then he came, and he didn't tell me. And he came on the show with his guitar one day and said, hey, I want to surprise you with something. And he handed me the album, and then he played the song and said,
That's fantastic.
I wrote this for your show, yeah.
That's fantastic.
He's the best. Here come the Papa Paws. Papa Papa. Here you go. Ah, 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 we got them. That's awesome.
I appreciate it.
You know what? We could just end the show now.
Yeah, that's it.
That made it all worth it.
Happy to look watch.
Trying to get this up on some of the North Andover forum pages and- Alright, I think we got some of them anyway. Wow, twice in a row, we gotta start the show now.
Alright.
How does it get any better than this? Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Duggan, who wants to pay attention. Podcast. Higher top two guys, Smoke Shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. Now, I'm always leery about doing a show like this because it only focuses on one town. Like, when we focus only on Methuen, it's good because a lot of Methuen people watch us. But a lot of the Methuen people, uh, Lawrence people don't kind of watch, and then the Fandover people, they're kind of like in their own bubble. Um, and so I always try to like diversify the show, but today is going to be about the North Andover Town Meeting. And a lot of people don't know what Town Meeting is, so if you're from Lawrence or Haverhill or Methuen, or you're up in New Hampshire in a city, you really should pay attention to this show because we want to educate people as to what Town Meeting is. And when I first moved to North Andover some 23 years ago, um, I didn't know what Town Meeting was, even though I was kind of like a news guy and knew a lot of stuff about what was going on with our local government. And when I went to my first Town Meeting, I was amazed at how this was really the purest form of democracy in our country. And so I want to talk, we're gonna talk a little bit with, uh, Town Moderator Marc DeSalvo, who is here today, about the process of Town Meeting, and we're also gonna talk about some of the things on the Town Meeting warrant, which is like if you watch your city council meeting, they have, they have item agenda items. And then they'll talk about each item, and someone will make a motion to maybe change it, uh, make an amendment, and then someone will make a motion to pass it, and then everybody will vote. Well, Town Meeting is like everyone's a city councillor. Everyone in the audience gets a chance to get up and make an amendment. Everybody gets a chance to, um, to maybe strike an item down or to add an item to the agenda. And if everybody in the room agrees, or the majority in the room agrees, um, then, then that will pass. So we want to talk about some of the warrant items, and we're not gonna really talk about opinion, although I'll, I'll throw mine in once in a while because I know that's what you guys-
Well, it's impossible of you not to do that.
Right, yeah, and that's what my audience expects anyway, right? Um, but I have to tell you, Marc DeSalvo, he's a partisan Democrat, and he's somebody that I did not vote for the first time he ran for Town Moderator. I voted for Frank McMillan, um, Dr. Frank, who's my doctor, by the way. Um, and then after he got elected, I showed up at Town Meeting and I watched how Marc, and I know all my conservative friends are gonna hate this, but it's, it's the truth, and you guys need to, you guys need to swallow it because it's the truth. Marc DeSalvo had did, has done a phenomenal job as our Town Moderator, and I don't mind saying that. I voted for you, uh, I didn't vote for you the first time, I've voted for you since then. Uh, because I watched how you brought innovation into Town Meeting, how you tried to make it more inclusive for people, how you tried to make it easier for people to go through the business of, of the town. And, and I think you've been far more transparent than a lot of people thought you were going to be, given that you're a partisan Democrat. I think a lot of people like me voted against you the first time you ran because we thought you were gonna bring your partisan Democrat hackery, for lack of a better word, to the job of Town Moderator. And you've kind of done that by putting a lot of liberals on a lot of boards, and that, and that, you know, is a whole separate subject. But as the Town Moderator who runs Town Meeting, I can't think of anybody who could do a better job than what you've already done. And I want to thank you for that because, again, we don't agree on a lot of stuff, but I judge people based on their performance, and your performance has been stellar.
Well, I truly appreciate it, Tom. You know, there's no Democrat or Republican, there's no conservative or liberal way of running a Town Meeting. There's only a fair, open, and efficient way of doing a Town Meeting. And it's really easy to be efficient if you're not fair. That's why fair comes first.
Right.
Everybody deserves to have the opportunity to express an opinion. Everybody has the opportunity to feel comfortable about the, uh, ability to express an opinion. And, and this is the most important part. The folks who come to Town Meeting change immediately from residents and citizens to legislators. Town Meeting is the legislative body of the community of North Andover. We've been that way since 1646.
Crazy.
Town Meeting is the longest active continuing body politic in the world of a singular type. And North Andover has been doing it every single year, multiple times sometimes, since 1646. And it's really true. Every vote counts, and every single person who attends Town Meeting has a voice.
And an equal voice. It's not like, you know, it's not, a lot, a lot of places claim they care about democracy, and it's really kind of a sham democracy because every vote really kind of doesn't co- You know, i- if I vote for Donald Trump and I live in Massachusetts, I'm wasting my vote because my vote's not counting. But at Town Meeting, every vote does count.
Thomas Jefferson characterized Town Meeting and the tradition, and that's all it was at that time that the Constitution was being crafted, uh, uh, was a, a tradition of government and characterized it as the most efficient and the most important because of that ability for every citizen to have their voice heard. And, and every voice counts, just as every vote counts. You've been to a few Town Meetings where you would anticipate, I've seen many over my 50 years of, uh, more than 50 years of attending Town Meetings, where somebody gets up, asks a question, or makes a cogent comment, and it totally sweeps the room.
Right.
Changes everything. It's because the most important activity at Town Meeting isn't speaking, it's listening.
Right.
That you owe your fellow citizens the opportunity to listen. It isn't a forum just for making statements. It's a forum for influence.
Right.
And that's what Town Meeting does.
And I've gone to Town Meeting thinking that a vote was gonna go one way, and all of a sudden, two thirds of the room shifts.
Yeah.
Like, through the discussion, all of a sudden, everybody's going in a different way, and I'm like, holy crap. Like, the, um, the, the marijuana dispensary. Uh, I, I was against it, but I went to Town Meeting expecting that that was gonna pass. Because North Andover's taken a hard left over the last, since you've become moderator, and I don't, I want to give you a little credit for that.
There's no correlation there.
Well, actually, there is, but that's another show. Um, but, but I, but I've seen, and I, and I've thought, I was shocked when it went the other way because, again, a- a- as a conservative, but not a Republican, um, I was against it, but walked in thinking I was gonna get clobbered. I walked in thinking, you know what? This is gonna pass, this is gonna sail right through. And it started, that was like a, I think that was a three-night vote, right? Didn't they do that over two nights?
No, we've had-
They did it, they came back.
We've only had single night, um, uh, Town Meetings since I became-
I thought like we started the Town Meeting and then they had to come back, maybe I'm just remembering it wrong.
We had almost 3,000 people at that Town Meeting.
Yeah.
And had it in the fieldhouse among all the other venues of the high school. And the, the entire, um, um, warrant was essentially that one item. And in a couple of hours, we disposed of, in this circumstance,
Right.
uh, cannabis opportunities in, in, uh, North Andover.
And that hurt North Andover financially.
Perhaps.
Um, but it doesn't really seem like it-
But it didn't matter.
Right, I was gonna say, but it didn't really seem like it mattered a whole lot.
Well, no, it didn't matter that there may have been, uh, a financial hurt to it. What mattered was that the judgment was made in, you hope, a thoughtful and judicial manner so that people sat there and said, this is how I might feel about a specific issue, but it may affect generations to come, and I need to be at least reflective or considerate-
Right.
-of that. And whether you agreed with the judgment that happens at Town Meeting, you can have some certainty that it is at least indicative of the body politic in that room. Because all that counts are the hundreds of people who happen to show up, sometimes thousands, but the hundreds of people who show up and they make all of the decisions.
Right, now let me ask you a political question, just for fun, even though-
I may or may not choose to answer it.
So, so isn't this kind of like a representation of white supremacy in the history of white people? Because Town Meeting started by white people, and it was kind of fostered through like the Greeks and Romans, and it kind of came this way through our democratic process? Isn't that kind of like white supremacy? Like, aren't we, aren't we stoking white supremacy through the history of? No?
So the answer-
Because I hear that from your party a lot.
So the answer is no.
Okay.
And notwithstanding what party I might happen to be affiliated with, it has nothing to do with Town Meeting. Town Meeting is established by law, uh, Massachusetts law, uh, but it hap, it started well before Massachusetts law was actually created. Massachusetts didn't exist at the time the Town Meeting was crafted. It is entirely local for the benefits and interest of the people who live in that community.
We got them on, we got them on record, the Town Meeting is not racist, so that's a good. Want to thank our sponsors, McLennan Real Estate, Century 21, we love Matt and all those guys.
Yes, we do.
And by the way, go on their Facebook page, they, they put up a lot of funny videos that kind of make you want to buy houses from them.
The gang are very, very funny.
And they're great people. I want to thank the Zany Pesci Law Office in Methuen. We love, uh, Vinnie and Jana. Jana was our, our, our bash MC this year. Uh, she did a fantastic job.
Yes, she is.
Marseille and Sun Construction, EIS Investigation and Gun Training, Borelli's Deli, the new owners of Borelli were here last week with, uh, with Don Smariglio. And one of the things that they started right away, when they took over Borelli's on Monday, is they started doing a sandwich of the day. It makes me want to go there every day now. I was going there once a week, and when they posted in the morning, this is our sandwich of the day, I'm like, damn, I gotta go back again. It's, it's amazing. Uh, Tomo and Shaken Seafood, Clear Path for Veterans New England, a little update on our veteran Jeff. We talked to Jeff last night, he showed up at TMF. He looked clean, and it's, it's, it's surprising to me, but he looked clean, and we're trying really hard to get him back to Clear Path. And I know he watches the show, and I know he's still on the street, but he's gotta, you gotta go back, Jeff. You gotta get in touch with us. We had a nice conversation last night, and he, he, he seems like he's starting to, he's starting to lean toward going back to rehab. And anytime we see a veteran on the street, it breaks my heart that we're spending all this money everywhere else in the world, and we have homeless veterans. There's no, there shouldn't be such a thing as a homeless veteran in this country if you, if you go off and, and service your country. But here it is, and we've got it, and I want to thank everybody at Clear Path for helping, uh, to get Jeff the first time, and we're, he, they're still working with us to try and help him get him back into rehab.
Well, Tom, if I might interject-
Sure.
You have been, most particularly around this issue, a true stalwart relative to the simple humanity of caring for people who are in need.
Well, thank you, that means a lot, because I'm a, I'm a conservative, and all I hear from a lot of people on Facebook is, is how I don't care about anybody because I'm a conservative and I'm an evil Nazi, so-
It's demonstrative otherwise.
So, but I, but I appreciate that coming from you, because maybe they'll listen to you, they don't listen to me. Uh, AFC Urgent Care, we love Lisa, and by the way, I met with the mayor in Lawrence yesterday. They're working very hard to help Lisa, uh, get her billboard that she's looking for. And by the way, don't tell anybody, it's a secret, and I know my audience won't tell, won't say anything. Um, but, uh, I met with Mayor Brian DePina yesterday. Live TD is coming back. We're getting a scanner, and we're gonna go live again. So that's, that's phenomenal. Uh, I also want to thank David Consolay, Pleasant Valley Landscaping, and then a free shout out to JG's Ice Cream and Sullivan Insurance. We love both of them, and the Doug McCarrio Law Office, as well as our good friend Paul Lambert. So we've got a bunch of things coming up on Town Wa- How does something become a warrant item? How does something become on the agenda for Town Meeting?
Very, very simple, and this is one of the powers of Town Meeting. First of all, you would anticipate that organizations like the Select Board or the School Committee would have the opportunity to place an item on Town Meeting. But it also takes the whopping number of 10 citizens to petition the Select Board, and they are then required to put that item on the Town Meeting warrant.
That's great.
And this year, we have, I think, five citizen petitions that cover a wide variety of issues uh, that are on our Town Meeting that will be determined exclusively without interference by the Select Board or the School Committee, or a Planning Board, or any other, uh, body. While they might have an opinion, and they'll express that opinion, it's only the people who attend Town Meeting, like yourself, who will have the opportunity to vote up or down on those citizen petition articles. So, simple, 10 registered voters, that's it.
So if I, if I want to change something in town, all I gotta do is go out and get signatures from 10 of my fellow citizens in North Andover, submit it to Town Hall, it goes on the Town Warrant, and then everybody can get up and talk about it, debate it, discuss it, amend it, and vote on it.
It will either have, um, um, uh, support, or it won't. You might end up being embarrassed, you might end up being an icon.
Right.
Who knows?
I've, I've done both.
As have I.
I've gotten up and embarrassed myself, and I've gotten up and made some great points, but at the end of the day, it's more, it's less about us looking good at the microphone and more about representative democracy. Expressing your ideas and, and having the opportunity to express your ideas. One of the things that always annoyed me about city council meetings, no matter what town you're in, is they have what they call public participation, and they go, okay, but you got two minutes. Well, you, how do you, how do you express, if you, if you're having a hard time with maybe an environmental issue in your neighborhood, or you've been beaten by a police officer, or you've got like a serious legitimate grievance that you want your town to, to address, how do you do that in two minutes? You, you can't. And then they can't do a back and forth, like someone will get up at Methuen or Lawrence City Council Meeting, speak for two minutes, and say, and I don't understand why you guys voted for this, and they can't answer back. Because it's not, it's not a discussion, it's just they get to speak for two minutes and then sit down.
So Town Meeting-
At Town Meeting, it's the exact opposite.
Exactly. Town Meeting is not a public participation effort or a public comment effort at a meeting. It is rather a declaration that we are going to speak about the four corners of this subject, and anybody who has an opinion, who has a query, who has a better idea, is welcome to express it at that time. Now, there are rules, you need to be courteous, uh, you need to speak within the certain time limits and the like. You have to stay on the subject, you can't-
But it's not two minutes, though, like you guys give them enough time to actually talk.
Uh, well, each individual will have the opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes. But if you need to come back and express an opinion again, you need to follow up with an answer to a question, you need to raise another query, then you have that, uh, there's no ti- cumulative time limit relative to that. And the body determines itself, usually I can sense it, but the body determines itself. I think we're done with this issue, let's move on, let's have a vote.
Right.
One way or the other.
And we've seen that, sometimes people are just beating a dead horse, they keep getting up, making the same point, and then it's up to the Town Moderator. And by the way, you've been very fair. I've watched you over the years, and I've seen people who are, maybe don't share your political views, get up, and, you know, say some things that I know you probably didn't agree with, and people start, you know, making comments in the audience, hey, let's vote, let's vote, and you're like, hey, hold on, give them a chance to speak. And then once someone starts repeating themselves, then you'll say, hey, as the fair moderator, hey, listen, we've heard that, does anybody have something new to discuss? And then if they don't, then you call a vote.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
I, I'm delighted that you've studied my, uh, role and, and style here.
I have, because when I went to my first Town Meeting after you got elected, I expected a very different Marc DeSalvo.
What did you expect?
So, well, I expected you to be a, a lot more partisan and a lot less fair. And, because, because prior to that, you have been an activist, and you're, again, you're a partisan. At the time, I was a partisan, I was a Republican partisan, you were a Democrat partisan. And I was expecting you to get up and be more, um, ah, what's the word I'm looking for? You would lean more toward people who agreed with your political views and give them more time and less time for those who- Because in other communities, that's how it works. The Republican gets elected to Town Meeting, and the liberals don't get a chance to speak as much as the conservatives do. And so I was kind of expecting that from you, and when I watched you at your very first Town Meeting, I walked out of there so impressed, that was the day I said, you know what? I'm voting for this guy the next time he runs. Like, I don't even care who runs against him at this point. That was truly impressive, and I think a lot of people who were conservative, uh, Republicans, who are in that partisan, we have to hate everybody, that we don't, I think a lot of them walked out of there surprised, too. They might not have said it out loud, but I think a lot of them walked out of there surprised.
Well, I appreciate it. Uh, uh, you know, there's no partisanship to the manner in which one keeps order. There's no partisanship to the manner in which you afford anybody who comes to a microphone. I don't select who those people are. They come to a microphone, the very fact that you're there gives you the authority and the presence and the right to speak. That's the joy of open Town Meeting.
And you have to be a, a registered voter.
Yeah, there's two conditions. Uh, number one, you need to be a, a resident and registered voter in the town of North Andover. Number two, you actually have to come to the meeting.
Right.
And you have to have the temerity. We think it's, I think it's a comfortable environment, but you have to have the temerity to get up to a microphone and express yourself.
Right.
That's it.
So you brought a couple, we all want to get some warrant items, but first, you brought, uh, some innovations. When you became, you had a lot, Big Shoes to Fill with Charlie Salisbury, he was a great Town Moderator. Um, you came in and you immediately started to implement, um, some innovative ways that people could participate in Town Meeting that made it easier for the residents. Not so much easier for the insiders, which is what most people do when they get elected, but much easier for the, the residents themselves and the attendees of Town Meeting. Talk about some of those.
Two or three significant ones. The first was that I, I required a declaration of conflict of interest. That anybody who gets up to a microphone and in any way is conflicted or has a family member that has a financial interest or other interest in the item that's being discussed, you have the requirement of relating that to the community. And if you choose not to, and I find out and I ask you to do so, that, and you don't, then you are accepted from speaking on that matter any, any longer. Because the community needs to know-
Absolutely.
-what people's motivations are.
Full transparency.
Without question, that's one. Number two, while all the power is in the room, because only people who are in the room have the opportunity to vote, not all knowledge happens to be in the room. Now, I instituted a circumstance, the first in the nation, whereby one can remote call in by question, by text, by email, a question, not a comment, not a motion, but a question. And on the basis of that question, I might have the opportunity to direct it to somebody who has an answer. And I have seen it now at least two times, a call-in question from somebody who couldn't be in the room but is a citizen, changed the debate totally. That's why not all knowledge is in the room.
Right.
And my number one job, I'm not the Speaker of the House, I'm the moderator. I don't have an opinion about each article. As a matter of fact, I sign an affidavit on an annual basis that says I have made no public declaration of my personal opinion on any article before Town Meeting.
That's great. That's great. So do you want to talk a little bit about, uh, what's, excuse me, what some of the warrant articles are?
Sure, sure.
So let's talk about some of the, excuse me, too much coffee.
It was that, it was that great sandwich from Borelli's.
It was, it's, it's, Borelli's is fantastic.
Was there prosciutto on it this, uh, this time?
I don't think so today.
Oh, okay.
Today's the pastrami, um-
Ooh, that works.
You know what it is? It's the pastr- it's the Pastrami Rubin Sandwich. And I'm a big Rubin fan, so when I leave here, that's where I'm going. Uh, so we have some citizen petitions. Uh, one comment on this. So I saw something posted on Facebook from one of the, um, Board of Selectmen members, and I refuse to call it Select Board because I think it's just virtue signaling and silly. Um, but the, but one of the Selectmen posted online that a bunch of kids came in and they, and they submitted a, a citizen petition for Town Meeting, but didn't say what it was. And so I shared it, but I almost didn't share it because it's like, what am I sharing? It doesn't say what the petition is. So let's go through some of what the citizen petitions are. These are people that went out, they got the required signatures, they put it on the Town Warrant, and then we all get to vote on it come May 16th is the, uh, is the Town Meeting.
6:30 PM.
So Article 13, Citizen Petition, the William Sims Jr. Act. What is this?
Do we know who William Sims Jr. is?
No idea who he is.
William Sims is the most heralded, excuse me, is the most consequential and unheralded patriot in America right now.
Okay.
And in, um, 1788, the Andover, really North Andover, Town Meeting sent three individuals to the Constitutional Convention in Boston and instructed them to vote no on the adoption of the United States Constitution.
Wow.
Mr. Sims got there on the first day, horse and carriage ride to Boston, um, stayed in a rooming house for the several weeks that the convention took place. And on the first day, he got up in front of John Hancock, who was president of the Constitutional Convention, and related what his community had directed him to do, and said that he agreed with that direction. Then he sat back and listened. The convention at that time was split literally down the middle, 50/50, to support or not support the United States Constitution in terms of ratification. Sims decided to get up, and he announced that he had changed his mind. And it was that vote that broke the log, logjam, that opinion, wildly, wildly heralded and widely published across the nation. It was that important. And Massachusetts, because of his temerity, became the sixth state to endorse, ratify, the United States Constitution. And it was very, very clear that if Massachusetts had not ratified the Constitution, most of the other states, a sufficient number anyway, would not have even considered it. This group of eighth grade students who, uh, were studying the Constitution in the North Andover Middle School decided that what happened to Sims after he returned was inappropriate. And I'll tell you what happened to him. He was ignored. He was shunned. His law practice was shuttered. He was literally driven out of town. And he left town, moved to Portland, Maine, and never returned.
Wow. Wow, because that's quite a story.
Yeah, and they are asking the community to just acknowledge that this in fact happened, and to recognize that Mr. Sims deserved better treatment, if you will, by the community than that which he received in 1789.
All right, so let me ask you this, because I, I, and it's just my personal opinion, it doesn't really mean anything to anybody, but having done this for so long, I always hate these things that have no substance to them. If this was a, a citizen petition to name something after him, I would spearhead it. Like, I'd write an editorial, and I'd show up at Town Meeting, and I'd, I'd, I'd knock on people's doors if I had to, because it was substantive. But is there any of that substance to this, or is this just, like, we're just gonna publicly acknowledge?
So this is a resolution that allows the acknowledgement of his story. And, uh, to my mind's eye, it is at least a first step for the potential prospect of something about which you've just noticed.
Right. I mean, if they want to name a park, or a school, or, or a square, something, that would be much more substantive.
One of the houses of North Andover Middle School, there are three of them, is named after William Sims.
Okay, good.
Um, personally, I don't believe that that's enough for this unheralded but consequential person.
And I never knew that story, so that's a great story. The next one is, boy, this is something that really just frosts me, but I, again, we're just gonna talk about what it is. Um, uh, Article 14, Citizen Petition, ban on single-use disposable plastic bags.
So there's a, an, a group of individuals supported by something called the North Andover Sustainability Committee, which has some official sanctions, so their opinion will be made known at Town Meeting. But they have, um, uh, have, uh, requested that plastic bags sold, or rather utilized in stores with more than 3,000 square feet, there happened to be, I believe, 60 of them in North Andover, would be banned at a certain date in the future from utilizing plastic bags. There are other communities that have done this. Uh, it was considered, it was anticipated that this was going to come up in 2019, as a matter of fact. Or rather, post 2019, at the 2020, um, Town Meeting that we held outdoors because of COVID. And they chose not to bring it up, and this year, that group of citizens is going to be arguing their case, and the number of people who come will make the judgment for our town.
I, I'll, I'll be voting against it. Tewksbury tried that, and then during COVID, they went back on it because the science supposedly said that COVID clings to plastic more than it clings to paper, and so they've kind of done away with it. And by the way, for those at home, we only have plastic bags because the environmentalists, so-called, back in the 70s and the 80s, said we were cutting down too much of the rainforest, we were cutting too many trees, we're causing global warming, we need plastic bags.
Now, you promised to be a good boy.
I, I did, yes. I'm just giving them the history.
Not pollute, not pollute the discussion.
Um, go ahead. All right, so the next one is, uh, Article 15, Petition, An Act to Amend Town Law's Annual Town Meeting. What is this one?
Yeah, so there are two petitions about Town Meeting. Um, one of them, by a citizen, requesting that, uh, should Town Meeting have to go to a second night or time period, that every day of the week but Friday be included, but Sunday, rather, be included in that, including the prospect of Saturday mornings. We used to have Saturday morning Town Meeting, as a matter of fact, and then defaulted to an evening in May. The second are- The second article about town meeting is a charter change, and our charter says the town meeting must happen at a certain Tuesday in May. And this request is to move that to the month of June in order to have what the petitioner hopes would be more participation from those people who are college students, for instance, moving back to North Andover.
All right, so we see what this is really all about, right?
What is that about?
Well, it's really all about just getting more people to vote liberal, because young kids vote liberal.
Are they?
They vote Democrat, oh yeah, they know, you know that, you know. But what's great about having Mark here is that he's not gonna give us his opinion on this stuff, and that's great, because we can actually focus on what the substance of this stuff is. Citizen Petition, Petitioning the General Court, An Act to Amend the Town Meet Charter, is that the one you just gave me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the next one is Citizen Petition, Humane Pet Shop Ordinance, this one was actually kind of interesting, I read this last night. I think it might be for this, but tell us what it is.
So, why don't you tell the audience what it is?
Well, it looks like it's saying that you can't sell puppies, you can't sell, and I'm a big rescue dog fan, right? One tail at a time in Boxford's been good to us, Cynthia Sweet's been great to us down there, I think she's in Medford. I'm a big fan of adopting dogs and not supporting dog breeders, and I think from what I read last night, this is going to stop the sale of pets in town.
That's exactly right, live animals would stop that sale. It would allow their display, would allow their adoption, but it would not allow their sale or for anybody who was involved in an adoption or rescue circumstance, that they could get no recompense from it.
Now, is it just businesses, or can like, if a person wants to sell their dog, that's okay, right?
I believe it's businesses, those businesses that are registered. Now, some of those AKC-oriented entities are in fact businesses. I honestly don't know how it affects individuals in terms of that judgment. This was a petition, again, by a minor, somebody who was not a registered voter, who, like the William Sims petition, really started by a group of eighth graders. This is a high school student who has decided that this is something that is important to her and was able to convince ten registered voters to share her opinion, or at least the right to have this discussed.
Right, right, and I think, I think it's a great issue, and I think I'm probably voting yes on that, not that anybody cares, but I'm a big fan of rescue dogs. And I see some of these puppy mills, and it's just that the conditions are just horrible, and I'm not gonna get into it, but... We have some financial articles, we've only got about seven minutes left. We've got some financial articles, which is the most important financial article that you think?
So, there are really two of them, the first is our annual town budget, that's the principal policy document in our town. Our annual town budget this year is, can you have a guess?
Four hundred and eighty million.
No. A hundred and thirty million, we're a very efficiently-run community, and that's-
By the way, by the way, that doesn't even cover the Lawrence Public School budget, just to let you know.
The public school budget is like two-thirds of that a hundred and thirty million, it's not including shared costs, about sixty million dollars. So, that, our hundred and thirty million budget, it's about up five percent from last year, covers all of the things that our community has the responsibility of delivering, from schools to veteran services, to fire and police and other emergency services and the like. And, and that's what we'll be discussing. Funnily enough, I suspect that we will have more conversation about any one of the five other items that we've just talked about-
Right.
-than they, than we will about a hundred and thirty million dollar budget.
And that's probably the most important one.
Yeah, well, at least it's important, statutorily, it's important, it needs to be voted on and ratified prior to June thirtieth, so that's why it's, we principally have town meeting in the, in the month or the spring period that we do.
Is there anything on the town warrant that increases development in town, because it's killing us, the new developments, they're killing us.
There are no articles, as I understand, in the zoning part of the warrant that has anything to do with a specific opportunity or development. There are articles relative to the ease of which, in which housing for low and moderate income people might be built, but there's no approval process for any project, as I understand. One of the other things that is a financial article that's important is our town's capital budget. That means what we put into buildings principally. And one of them is a twenty-one million dollar article in order to put in an addition and renovation of our existing middle school, we need more space. That will in fact be done without override, no tax increase whatsoever, and also potentially without state aid, but we don't know yet at the moment. We pray and hope that the state aid will be made available to us for some of the building projects that have been on. And it's anticipated that state aid will come, but we don't have a commitment at this moment.
You know, one of the, one of the issues that Phil DiColergero pushed when he was here, and then, by the way, left our community the minute he was no longer an elected official, Phil-
Well, I mean, Phil of the future.
Phil of the future.
Phil of the future has been a real contributor to our community.
He has, but then he left. And that always bothers, and that always bothers me, because people who say they love the town, and they probably still do, they get in, they make all these changes, then they don't have to live with the changes that they made. But one of the, but I brought him up because one of the things that he championed for a while, that I thought was great for the town, because it makes, it does make it immediately easier for people with less income to stay in town and not get priced out, is in-law apartments, and we pushed that really hard, we never got it. Any chance we can get that back, because there's a lot of people who are elderly that as, maybe not even elderly, like our age, they're fifties, right? As they, as they get to a little-
Thank you, I would like to be in my fifties.
But you're not in your fifties? I thought you were like my age.
How old am I?
I figured you were like fifty-six.
I'm sixty-nine.
No, no kidding, wow, a year away from seventy, wow, I guess I've known this guy a lot longer than I thought.
Like, almost fifty years, my friend.
But, you know, as people who are, who are, you know, getting close to elderly age or who are elderly, as prices of everything goes up, it gets harder for them to stay in town. And they may have a relative who lives in town that can build it in a law apartment, so they can stay in town. And right now, we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't, it's not in this year's town meeting. I do anticipate, and I know that there's a group of folks in the community who share your interest and are asking our planning board and planning department to address that accessory unit kind of development circumstance. And I would anticipate it'll come up at a future town meeting.
I mean, they're building all these monstrosities of housing all over, they ought to at least be able to make it easier for people who will... So, we got about three minutes on, anything else on that, what's on that, what else is on the town warrant that we can educate people about that's gonna be a big, a big draw?
Well, the most important thing, there's really little about a draw here. And people come to town meeting for two reasons. Because they're just interested and they love the community and it's their tradition, or two, there's something controversial or something of personal interest, and that's why they come. My hope, and we see nothing enormously controversial, we won't have three thousand people like we did relative to cannabis, we won't have near two thousand people like we did relative to the Royal Crest matter of just a year ago. But there will be several hundred, six, eight, nine hundred, perhaps more, people at town meeting. I hope a very representative group of people who will sit back and recognize, "I'm a legislator, I am making consequential judgments for the benefit of my community, the all thirty thousand-plus people in my community who live here today and will live here in the future." That's a hell of a weight that you should have on your shoulders, which is why you want, you want to listen, you want to speak advisedly, and you want to vote appropriately with that good judgment, while we enjoy a fair, open, and efficient town meeting.
And there's a lot of people who put this town meeting together and volunteer their time for this town meeting. And we want to thank them, because we got a couple of minutes left. And I see the, I guess what you call the ward captains, who do the counting, you have, you know, people who are checking people in at the door, I assume most of these people don't get paid. And then you've also got all the board members who sit up on stage and will say, you know, "Board of Selectmen voted yes on this, or voted no on this school committee zoning board, whatever." They all deserve, they all deserve kudos for-
Lots of community, lots and lots of community involvement, just to pull off the town meeting on an operational basis, like the folks who will count to vote when necessary, those folks who are checking people in to make sure that you're authorized to come into the meeting and express an opinion. And there's all kinds of people around the technology, for instance, one of the things that we do that the town does is puts out a daily information guide about an article or a warrant article of the moment with the background, so that you know what's going on in our community. It's all about transparency, information, the ability to discuss, and then making a judgment.
And I will vouch for that, even though we don't agree on a lot of stuff. I'll tell you one thing that I want to put back on, if I can't get it done through back channels, is I used to get mailed one of these town warrants, and I'm not one, because, maybe because of my age, but I'm not someone who can read a lot of, a lot of volume of text on a computer. My eyes start getting watery, because I stare at a screen all day. I would have liked to have gotten one of these in the mail and been able to flip through it with a highlighter or a pen and circle things that I like or don't like, and cross things out and put in questions. And the town stopped doing that, and I'm sure it was probably to save money.
That's exactly right.
But my question is, what price democracy?
Yeah, that's exactly right, I would concur with you that if I had an opinion and I had the ability to be able to unilaterally determine that it'd be posted, I would like it to be posted to every household in the community, whether you come to town meeting or not.
Right.
However, if it, this is available, the result of a whole lot of work of lots of individuals. It is available right now, I believe in the town library and at our town clerk's office. I brought you one-
And I thank you for that, because now I can actually go through it and-
Yep.
This is, I mean, look at the volume of this, this is, I don't know if the pages are numbered, but I think we're close to a hundred pages here, right?
We're well in excess of a hundred pages.
Wow, yeah, this is exactly a hundred, actually, at the very end, we're exactly ninety-nine, a hundred.
Yep.
So, it's exactly a hundred pages, that's a lot, that's a lot of volume to read on a computer.
Yeah.
So, maybe we can work on that for the next town, maybe I'll get ten people to sign a petition, and we'll put it on the town meeting and just say, hey-
One can make that as an amendment to the town budget, if one chose to do so.
Or maybe we could even just say, not to send it to everybody, but maybe if people want to sign up for a list, so you're not wasting it sending it to people who don't want it, how about just having like, people can go online, they can give their email with their address, and they can-
Sounds like a future town meeting warrant.
I might even make an amendment to this, can you make an amendment to something on, and I know we're out of time, I'm sorry, Chrissy, can we make an amendment to something on a current item that doesn't really have to do with that item, like how Congress does? Can I, can I get up at one of these, say, "Hey, can we just add this in?"
There may be a way, and we can talk about this offline relative to that specific thing. And by the way, I advise all kinds of citizens who have queries, give me a ring, my home number is in the book and it's on the website, as is my email, I'm very, very happy to talk to everybody. And I have conversations with people who have interest in amendments and advise them what's appropriate and what's not, and how to structure that. And I also have a group of citizen advocates on the town meeting floor to help people in the moment actually structure that stuff.
That's amazing, Mark, is there anything else you want to impart on our viewers and listeners? Actually, we have way more listeners than viewers.
I want to thank everybody for this opportunity. I try to be an apostle for town meeting, and I'm delighted that you believe it's important. And for those cities and towns that are out there who don't take advantage of open town meeting, come and try it one of these days.
Yeah.
It truly is the closest thing to participatory democracy ever.
And it's May sixteenth, and I would also encourage you, if you're not from North Andover, people can still go and observe, right? Come to North Andover Town Meeting and observe as a non-voter and see how real democracy works.
You can watch it on television, you can watch it on a live stream. By the way, that live stream will be closed captioned in the room and outside of the room.
That's good for guys like me.
For those people who might have a hearing impairment.
I do, so I love closed caption. I want to thank our sponsors, first, I want to thank Mark DeSalvo for being here, I think it takes a lot of courage to come out here and talk about these things, especially when, you know, I'm kind of a controversial guy, I'm sure you're gonna get as much crap for being here as I'm gonna have, get from people for having you here.
We're pretty twinned as far as that's concerned, there's a real yin and yang to what you've just noted.
Thank you, I want to thank our sponsors, we love our sponsors, by the way, I've got room for two sponsors. So, so if you're thinking of sponsoring the show, this is a good time to get in, because I do cap it off. McLennan Real Estate, Century Twenty-One, the Zany Peschi Law Office, JG's Ice Cream, free shout-out to them, because I love the Jafida Brothers, they're just such good guys. Pleasant Valley Land Scaping, call Dave Idconsoli, he'll take care of you. AFC Urgent Care, don't sit in the, in the waiting room at Holy Family for four hours, go to AFC, you're literally in and out in fifteen minutes. The Mercurial Law Office in North Reading, give Doug a call if you have any legal issues. Clear Path for Veterans New England, Tomo and Shaken Seafood, Borelli's Deli, EIS Investigation and Marsland Sun Construction. Thank you, Chrissy, for letting us go over today, I know it's tough, because you got a long day today, but I appreciate it. And Mark, thank you so much for being here, hopefully you come back.
It'd be my delight to do so.
By the way, thank you for encouraging your state representative to come do the debate here. Appreciate that. Melvin Talm, Melvin Taylor says, "You gotta go home." So, go home already.
The views and opinions expressed by the hosts, guests, or callers of this program do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Studio Twenty-One Podcast Cafe, the United Podcast Network, its partners or affiliates.